Good evening and welcome to the special presentations portion of the council meeting for the City of Moreno Valley on May 2, 2017. Our first presentation will be the Moreno Valley, I'm sorry, the Moreno Elementary School Drill and Color Guard. Mayor Gutierrez will be recognizing the student cadets from Moreno Elementary School and recognizing retiring Captain Michael Aiken and Assistant Commandant, Commandant Carol Makita.
Okay. Well, good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to recognize all of these young individuals and also Captain Aiken and also the commandant as well. It is my pleasure to be here and to also recognize these individuals for their recent competition, too. So I'd like to first invite their leaders up here, which is Captain Michael Aiken and also Commandant Carol Makita? Is it Makita? Okay. Captain Aiken, I'm just going to start off with Captain Aiken first. Heads the Drill Corps Student Cadets Program at Moreno Elementary School. He started over 13 years ago, this leadership program, and it's been fantastic. He has taught the cadets social skills and discipline, as you can see right now. Other lessons have included social studies with a focus on government, which provided an awareness of government and instilled interest and respect for it. Cadets are so well-versed in government that in many instances, they know more than their older schoolmates. Oftentimes, Mr. Aiken paid transportation expenses for the team out of his own pocket. In addition to the time Mr. Aiken devoted to the team, which was all unpaid, he also assisted students after school with any difficulty, especially in math. And last but not least, Captain Aiken has been recognized by the school board as an outstanding community volunteer. This will be unfortunately Captain Aiken's last year, and that's why we want to make this a special event tonight, as he retires this month and relocates to the state of Texas with his family. We wish to thank him for his hard work and mentorship while leading the cadets at Moreno Captain Aiken, we wish you all the best and thank you so much for devoting all of those years of service. You know, you didn't have to and you did. So you know, it's part of being a public servant that you are. So congratulations on that, okay? Thank you. And we have the certificate, mayoral proclamation and certificate of recognition that I'm going to present to Captain Aiken. And assisting alongside him for the past 11 years, we have Commandant Carol Makita, the assistant commandant, who works at the school as a special education assistant. Both have served in their capacities completely voluntarily, always doing so on their own time without pay while sharing their talents for the students and the kids. In total, so I want to go ahead and present this certificate as well to Carol Makita. If we can give her an applause, please?
Thank you.
In total, I tell you, these student cadets, and actually I'm going to have, if I could have all the student cadets come up to the podium over here?
Drill Team, left, face, forward, march.
Yeah, okay. Well, let me do first six.
First one, right, face, forward, march.
So I just want to say that these student cadets have participated in 38 competitions under Captain Aiken. However, most recently, the student cadets participated in the 2017 Inland Empire Invitational Drill Meet where they were awarded outstanding performance. I'd like to recognize these student cadets with individual certificates. So if maybe the two of you can help me, I'm going to go ahead and name the names. Or do you want to name the names? Okay, all right.
I can help with that.
Go ahead and just, thank you.
Okay, the first one is for Ethan Morales.
He's your youngest, he's in second grade.
Wow, proud of you. This is your certificate.
Wow.
You want to take a picture? Someone, is that mom? Wait, hold on, come here. Standing with the mayor. Is that mom? I want to take a picture because she's so proud of you. Okay, thank you. Next is Kenneth Morales. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Come on up here because I'm going to take your picture, okay? Next is Emily Becker. Okay. Imani Campbell. Giovanni Castillo. Allison Miranda. Lyric Sevier. Peyton Taylor. Brock Vialba. Lisa Aiken. Jocelyn Gómez. Brandon Garcia. Michaela Harvey. Emily Hodge. Landon Humphrey Hicks. Ivan Morales. Luke Bowles. Bowles, congratulations. Big smile.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and give them another round of applause. And if we could just have maybe the two of you here and then we can invite the rest of the council to for a picture?
Third squad.
Well, I want to say congratulations to a job well done and I also want to give a shout out to the parents for your support in this program and for being here tonight supporting your students. Thank you. Our second presentation for the evening will be the Business Spotlight. The first business that we'll be putting the spotlight on is Sonora Grill located at 23962 Alessandro Boulevard on the corner of Heacock. Sonora Grill has been winning over the hearts and appetites of Moreno Valley patrons for over six years with inventive dishes like the Heartbreaker, a bacon-wrapped hot dog covered in pinto bean, sauteed onions, tomato mustard mayo, and a special jalapeno sauce, all weighing in at a pound. At Sonora Grill, they specialize in Sonoran-style food from the northern region of Mexico that is based on family recipes, and they won't tell you what it is. The ingredients are made fresh daily and the bread is baked on-site from a secret recipe that the owners convinced a man in Mexico, and they won't tell you where, to share with them. Recently, the business completed a large expansion to accommodate the best local brews on tap. Events and hungry customers, Sonora Grill is happy to do business in Moreno Valley where they feel supported by the city, police, fire, and local military personnel that they are proud to include as not only their customers but their family. Today, we recognize Sonora Grill with this Business Spotlight video. Please roll the video.
My name's Rudy Garcia. Name of the business, Sonora Grill. Sonora Grill specializes in Sonoran street foods. What makes us stand out from any other local restaurant is the freshness and the love that we put into our food. Everything from the handmade tortillas, the handmade buns, some of the other items that we offer. The Heartbreaker is an all-beef Angus bacon-wrapped hot dog that weighs in at over a pound. We offer our bacon-wrapped burrito, which we've dubbed El Chapo. Come visit us at Sonora Grill. Food, family, fun, and flavor.
Okay, Rudy and Rosie, if you would join us at the mic? And anybody else you want to bring up with you? Your customers are eating, right? Okay, well, I want to present you with the certificate for our Business Spotlight and the video that you just saw. And you can put it on your Facebook page, your website, wherever. And I can attest to the food because I've been there and their food is delicious, so please come by if you want to say some words.
Just on behalf of Rosie, myself, and the staff, thank you guys for all the love and support here in Moreno Valley so far. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
The next business is March Frame Shop located at 14420 Ellsworth Street. March Frame Shop is Moreno Valley's one-stop custom framing and engraving shop. The company specializes in one-of-a-kind military retirement gifts that proudly honor and display the service person's military record. They ship all around the world due to a patent they own on a very unique and high-demand military retirement plaque. They also create trophies and 3D shadow boxes with custom cuts. A veteran-owned business, March Frame Shop is proud to call Moreno Valley home and considers themselves a part of the community. Their major customers are the military, police departments, schools, and the city, who they consider family. Today, we recognize March Frame Shop with this Business Spotlight video. Please roll the video.
My name is Yona Moritz and I'm co-owner of March Frame Shop. We do custom engraving, custom shadow box. We work mostly with the military. Everything that we do in the frame shop is custom-made. Biggest highlight is shadow boxes. So when people retire, then they come to me because I do something special that no one else can do. My shadow boxes are three-dimensional. Everything has its own little focal point, so I have every cutout for everything you bring in. Come on down to March Frame Shop where it's a one-stop shop. We do custom framing, custom engraving.
Representing the business tonight is co-owner Yona Moritz. If you'd please join us. And here's a certificate for the Business Spotlight program and two copies of the video that you could put on your Facebook page or website. And please say some words to your customers out there.
Well, hopefully you're all already customers, right? If not, within, yeah, we've been doing this for 26 years and we've been in several different businesses, but this is the one that's going to last the longest and we're going to retire doing this. But we love Moreno Valley. We love the military. We love everything about this city. So you know, come on down. We do everything custom, engraving, custom framing, everything.
Thank you. Thank you to both businesses for participating in our Business Spotlight program. The third presentation will be Employee of the Quarter. For our first quarter, which is Ernie, Prese, and Angel Oriana, and Mayor Gutierrez, and Ahmad Ansari, the Public Works Director and City Engineer for the City of Moreno Valley, will recognize Employees of the Quarter.
Go ahead and have Ahmad.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like Ernie and Angel to come up, please.
Congratulations.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Potem, members of City Council. On Christmas Eve of last year, Fire Department requested assistance from Public Works Department for a trench rescue incident involving a resident's dog who had fallen into a 20-foot-deep sinkhole. Ernie, Prese, lead maintenance worker, and Angel Oriana, maintenance worker two, had the equipment and training needed to assist with this rescue attempt and were willing to help at the moment's notice. During the five-hour incident, the sinkhole dropped an additional 30 feet and grew increasingly unstable. Ernie and Angel assessed, modified, adjusted, and their stabilization methods to ensure that the emergency personnel had secure and safe access points at all times. Additionally, these employees continue to assess unpredictable sinkhole conditions in relation to surrounding structures to determine if there were additional threats to property damage. The Fire Chief Abdul Ahmad wrote a letter of appreciation to the Public Works Department, specifically noting that Ernie and Angel were highly trained and extremely capable in providing aid and support to the emergency response team. The level of technical precision, adaptation, and customer care delivered during this incident clearly illustrated that they deserved recognition. Mayor, Ernie has served the city for 13 years. He has enjoyed 10 years of marriage to his wife, Jennifer. They have two boys named Garrett and Seth. Ernie and his family enjoy spending quality time together and taking trips to the river. Angel has served the city for 12 years. He and his girlfriend Gabriela are raising two boys named Elia and Matthew. Their family enjoys making memories from family activities and time spent together. Tonight, it is my honor to recommend the City Council to recognize the employees as Employees of the Quarter for the first quarter of 2017.
It is my honor as mayor to recognize Angel Oriana with this beautiful plaque and recognition for your service and exceptional performance in the assistance in that event. Congratulations, Angel. Oh, hold on, let me get this out of the way. It's also my honor to congratulate and recognize Ernie for his exceptional performance as well. Let's give him an applause, too.
The fourth presentation is May Mental Health Month Proclamation. Councilmember Marquez will be speaking and presenting a proclamation to Commissioner Greg Damewood. Please come forward, who is from the County of Riverside Behavioral Health Commission and also representing Riverside University Health Systems.
Each year, many Americans feel the reality of living with a mental health condition. For over 65 years, the mental health of America and other organizations across the country have led the observance of May as Mental Health Month to reach the people through the media, local events, and bring the issue of mental health to the forefront of our nation's thoughts. On behalf of the City Council and the City of Moreno Valley, I would like to present this proclamation to Craig Damewood, Commissioner of County of Riverside Behavioral Health Commission. The proclamation reads as, "Mental health is a person's overall health and wellness, and in one out of five adults experience mental health, one out of five, in any given year, and one in 17 adults live with mental illness such as major depression, bipolar disorder, and other ones. Approximately one-half of chronic mental health begins at the age of 14 and three-quarters began at the age of 24. Long delays, sometimes decades, often occur between the offsets of symptoms and when individuals get help. Early and demarcation treatment can make a big difference in successful management of health and recovery. It is important to maintain mental health and learn the symptoms of mental health in order to get help when it is needed. Every person in this community can make a difference in helping and the silence..." Every person in this community can make a difference in helping end the silence and stigma that for too long has surrendered mental health and discouraged people from getting help. Public education, civil activities, and encourage mental health and help improve the lives of individuals and families affected by these mental illness. Now, therefore, it is proclaimed the City of Moreno Valley and the City Council, on behalf of its citizens and staff, does hereby recognize May 2017 as Mental Health Month, and can call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools in the City of Moreno Valley, to urge our community to increase awareness, understanding of mental health, expand the dialogue about the steps of our citizens can take to promote mental health and wellness, and foster an understanding about the needs for appropriate and accessible services in the mental health of all people."
I really appreciate the City of Moreno Valley supporting mental health. I chair several committees. There's always room for more volunteers. Criminal Justice Committee is one of the things that I chair at this point in time. Approximately 50% of the population that are in prison are mentally ill, and the County of Riverside assists with that. So, it's always an ongoing issue that confronts our society. I would like to also invite you on Thursday, May 25th, to Fairmont Park for a festival. There'll be lots of resources, things that you can take away with you. There'll also be another festival on Saturday, May 13th, out at Foss Field Park in Paris. And this is on the County Riverside website. We also have the 15th Annual Desert Mental Health Awareness Arts Festival, and that'll be on Tuesday, May the 9th, from noon to 4:00. Most of these events start at noon, by the way. NAMI is also another organization that's the National Alliance on Mental Illness, and is also very supportive of mental health. It's holding a golf event on May the 19th at Gilman Springs. Anytime that you do have someone in your life that you feel has mental health issues, don't back off from trying to assist them due to the stigma. Try to be as supportive as you can, and show them respect and consideration. Again, I really appreciate tonight, and I appreciate the city that I live in honoring the May as Mental Health Month. Thank you.
The final presentation is Building and Safety Month Proclamation. If I can have Nick Henderson, Building and Safety Supervisor, and Ellen Brock, our Community Development Director and Building Official, to join me at the mic. Good evening. It is my great honor and pleasure to present a special proclamation recognizing the month of May as Building and Safety Month. Accepting this proclamation is Ellen Brock, our Community Development Director and Building Official, and Nick Henderson, our Building and Safety Inspector and the Building and Safety Staff. If all would please come forward. Do you have anyone else? Please come forward. We're honoring all of yous. Thank you. Building and Safety Month is a public awareness campaign to help individuals, families, and businesses understand what it takes to create safe and sustainable structures. The campaign reinforces the need for adoption of modern model building codes, a strong and efficient system of code enforcement and well-trained professional workforce to maintain the system. Professionals from the building, construction, design, and safety community, corporations, government agencies, professional associations, nonprofits, and more come together to support Building Safety Month because they understand the need for safe and sustainable structures where we live, work, and play. It is my pleasure now to present the following proclamation. Whereas the Community Development Department is committed to recognizing that Moreno Valley's growth and strength depends on the safety and economic value of the homes, buildings, and infrastructure that house our citizens both in everyday life, activities, and in times of natural disaster. And whereas the Building and Safety Division of the Community Development Departments' confidence in the structural integrity of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, and others in the construction industry, who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings and dwellings. And whereas these guardians of public safety are dedicated members of the building code community that comprise local and state officials, who are experts in the building environment, who create and implement the highest-quality code policies to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, worship, play. And whereas the Building and Safety Month serves to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown guardians of public safety, our local code officials who ensure safe, efficient, and livable buildings that are essential to keeping American community great. And whereas code officials partners in community safety and economic growth, the theme for Building and Safety Month 2017 encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of building safe and resilient construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, and new technologies in the construction industry. Building and Safety Month encourages appropriate steps everyone can take to ensure that the places where we live, learn, work, worship, and play are safe, and recognizes that countless lives have been saved due to the implementation of safety codes by local and state agencies. And whereas each year, in observance of Building and Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider the commitment to improving building safety at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments and fire prevention bureaus in protecting lives and property. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed, the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, on behalf of its citizens and staff, does hereby proclaim the month of May 2017 as Building and Safety Month.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. I think you said it all with that proclamation. But I want to thank the Mayor, Mayor Potem, council members for recognizing Building Safety Month. The staff really appreciates that. As I said just a second ago, you said it all. You have a very dedicated staff here that's well-trained, ready to serve, ready to educate the public on the importance of building codes. So what I'd like to do is just encourage the public to come down to Building and Safety during the month of May, come in and talk with the staff, and see what role that the building codes do play with the construction and the built environment here in Moreno Valley. It's very important. They can tell you about how buildings are safe, reliable, energy-efficient, and sustainable to help our economic growth, too. So, again, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. That concludes our special presentations for this evening. The regular City Council meeting will resume at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Good evening, and welcome to the joint meeting of the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Community Services District, City as Successor Agency, for the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Housing Authority, and the Board of Library Trustees. The City Council receives a separate stipend for CSD meetings. I now call this meeting to order on May 2nd, 2017, at 6:00 PM. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Mr. Frank Wright. Please remain standing for the invocation, which will be given by Pastor Jim Samples from the New Life Christian Fellowship.
Everyone face a flag. If you have an open heart, repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Our gracious Heavenly Father, how great you are. We acknowledge your authority in our leaders and in their decisions, and we welcome your presence, not only in this place, but throughout our city. We need you. May your eyes be upon us, and may you hear our petitions. Give our mayor, our City Council, the city staff, and the chiefs of our fire and police departments the wisdom necessary to make the countless decisions required to govern and direct this city in the way of truth and righteousness. Give them the courage to stand by their convictions for what is best for all the citizens of our community, and give them the strength to keep going even when the circumstances appear daunting. Grant them success and favor in every endeavor. May their lives be filled with joy, and their work a pleasure. Help us as citizens to do the work necessary to bring about peace and safety, health, and prosperity to everyone who calls Moreno Valley their home. Guide us in the truth, in the way that is right, and help us seek unity among every race, gender, language, and faith. Forgive us for any lack of concern for the welfare of our neighbors, and any apathy for those in the greatest need. Where we have lacked integrity and honesty, give us grace, and help us to communicate clearly and openly for the growth and health of this city. Help us all make Moreno Valley a great place to live and work and play. Expose the evil acts of those who seek to harm or steal. Uncover all criminal activity, and keep our first responders safe. Give us your mercy for our past, your protection for our present, and your hope for our future. All this we ask in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ, who loves Moreno Valley. Amen. Thank you, Pastor Samples. Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Gaiba?
Here.
Councilmember Marquez?
Here.
Mayor Potem Baca?
Here.
Mayor Gutierrez?
Present.
Staff introductions, please.
Pat Hacques-Nardes, City Clerk.
Marshall Ironman, Chief Financial Officer, City Treasurer.
Martin Kazanowicz, City Attorney.
Tom DeSantis, Assistant City Manager.
Mike Lee, Executive Development Director.
Ahmad Ansari, Public Works Director and City Engineer.
Joel Anteros, Chief of Police.
Abdul Ahmed, Fire Chief.
Mel Alonso, Parks and Community Services Division Manager.
Ellen Brock, Community Development Director.
Thank you, staff. Before we hear public comments this evening, I ask and encourage everyone participating to keep their comments respectful towards each other, also especially to the individuals at the podium. That means the audience as well. Finally, I ask that speakers bear in mind that comments are limited to three minutes for each speaker, and that you refrain from duplicating comments already made by others other than to note that you agree with the comment. Public comments on any subject not on the agenda under the jurisdiction of the City Council will be heard now. Those wishing to speak should complete and submit a blue speaker slip, and then turn it into the bailiff. And all remarks and questions shall be addressed to the presiding officer or to the City Council. And, Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers tonight?
Yes, sir, we have seven. We'll begin with Roy Blackert, Frank Wright, and Jose Chavez.
Tax Freedom Day was yesterday for every resident in the state of California. That means that every dollar you made up till May 1st went to pay taxes, state, federal, and local. Bad news is, that doesn't include fees and charges and other thing else. You probably got another month to go before you finally put a dollar in your pocket. But taxes locally have been a very big issue for many decades. We've had a utility tax that was promised to adequately fund public safety. It has not. We formed an electric company with the promise that it would adequately fund public safety. It did not. We have a new hotel tax that was marketed, and I seen all the brochures with the public safety personnel up there. That's a million dollars on the plate. That's enough to fund three patrol officers on the ground at 326K. And that's new revenue that you never had before. Any proposal that would even be considered that cuts public safety personnel at any point at this time, when we have increasing revenues, should be a non-starter. And anybody who votes for any of those things will probably hear from the people of the state of California, because Article 13, Section 35 of the state constitutions, the people of the state of California declare public safety is the number-one priority of municipal governments and for the economic well-being of the citizens. So if you want jobs, start there. If you don't have a safe community, you won't have jobs. I mean, I don't know how else to put it. I mean, I want to congratulate CAL FIRE and all the participants, Moreno Valley Fire Department, that participated in putting out the fire on Box Springs Mountain. If they're not there, you lose your homes. If you call 911, and a police officer isn't there because he's doing paperwork that somebody else could have been doing, what happens? I don't think anybody wants that. I sure don't. I want to see this community strive. When I read that this community is down purchasing power 30% in 15 years, that should be a major league concern. That should be something that's a priority to fix. We need to come together and fix all these things if we're going to be the community that everybody wants. That's the bottom line. And it starts there. It starts with the fundamentals, and it starts with dealing with things honestly.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Frank Wright, Jose Chavez, Ulysses Cabrera.
Good evening, Frank.
Evening, Honorable Mayor. It's a pleasure to be back in town again. Honorable Mayor and council members, it is very important that the citizens of Moreno Valley recognize the caliber of the men as Ulysses Cabrera, with the selection of the vacancy available on the City Council. Candidate with the inspiration and dedication in support of the present and future dreams of Moreno Valley, with commitment in keeping the safety of our neighborhoods, to increase the economy of the city, and the well-being of every individual. Is focused on the increased education of the schools by being able to communicate with the students in close order, with encouragement for all to complete and graduate with better knowledge, to obtain a good substantial life and sound employment. It will support the World Logistics Center, of which the city has strongly founded, for an advanced way of family life. Mr. Cabrera is young, with background trained, can reach the can reach the growing teenagers with enthusiasm and vitality as with all levels and groups with professional accountability at City Hall. He is indeed the finest choice for his district and benefit of the whole city. I encourage you all to select this man for the open position. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Next speaker, please. Jose Chavez?
Good evening, we, uh, my head and city councils and our city staff. Like I say, my name Jose Chavez. I really like what Roy was spoken for. Always, we heard about it, and our city always is in budget, 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 budget. We're requesting to repair the street. We're requesting to do things, and they never done because they say there's a budget. But I not even know what you guys is doing. And when I got through on this, I got to mention names. Gaiba is one was accepted as a position. The situation, Mr. Gutierrez, you was, you was a city council. And let me tell you, the other people that left, the two new people right there in the right side hand and my front head, they, they not, they not there when those thing happen. But my question at this one, we have a more than one year. I have evidence in my cell phone. Last week, one guy, one disabled guy was running into my front yard. And like I say, we requesting for more officer, but I have to going through what I have to say. You guys has the money. You guys has our taxpayer. You guys have funds right there already. But you guys is going to take care somewhere else with our own tax money to take care another city. What's, what's going on with you guys? Take care your own house first, and then if you have extra money, you can do something about it. But it doesn't mean you gotta leave those child in your home like animals, like our street is breaking and pieces a two inches square. It's nasty. It's worse at DJ. And our money is in city, in the Paris city. They have their own cities over there. They pay taxes. What they not using their own money? Why you guys borrow the money from Moreno Valley to those places up there? Take care our problems inside first. That's the way it's supposed to be. That's what happened when the people, they not use their own brain. They take care the business outside and they forgot the problems inside. We requesting for more officers long time ago. And don't say don't have a money to pay. Yes, we do have a money to pay for. But like I say again, I don't know what you guys think. I remember that Mr. Tom was supporting Jesse Molina from the plastic bags. So, but if you have a money, you got a place up there.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez. Thank you. Okay, next speaker, please.
Ulysses Cabrera. Tom Gerald Rafael Burguerras.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Evening, Mayor. Evening, Council. Good evening, staff and Moreno Valley residents. My name is Ulysses Cabrera. Today, I would like to share a few thoughts about three separate different topics that have to do with each other. So the first one is jobs. And I've been doing a lot more research because we know that we need jobs and we know that we need our residents hired into those jobs. And I've been doing more research into the way that the labor market is moving, the direction, the demand for jobs that there is. And the ones that keep coming up are the obvious ones, the technology and the medical industry. So I dove a little deeper into the medical field, and from what I saw, the highest growth projected into 2024 is at-home nurses, people that can go to people's homes and take care of the elderly. Because as we know, our life expectancies are increasing, so people are living longer periods of time, and, and these people need more help. We need more nurses to go help them out at their homes, at the hospitals. So I'm glad that we have that moving forward here in our city, and I hope that we can keep that going. And, you know, if there are any updates, I would love to hear about that, about the expansion to the medical corridor here in the city. Additionally, that moves over toward education and the college. Actually, today on campus, there was an event where they had the STEM bus out in the middle of the patio, and they had large groups of young kids, children, out on, on the college campus messing with different science experiments and really getting hands-on. So that's a way that the college is really incentivizing the kids, reaching out to them at a very young age so that they're, they have that, that, that capacity to go to college. They have that incentive to go to college, and, and they really, they're fired up. Once they're out of high school, they go straight there. So in addition to that, I was at the, the school board meeting, which was a study session last week, and the main topic was High School Number Five. So I know that we have the Joint Task Force, and I believe it was last week or two weeks ago that it was said that we met for the first time in eight months. I think that needs to happen a lot more often. I think we, we definitely should meet with those leaders on a more consistent basis so we can hear about what's really going on. And pertaining to High School Number Five, just to give everyone an update here who wasn't there, the general consensus was that High School Number Five should be put off for a later date because of the, the amount of money that we'd be losing if we do that immediately. So other than that, you know, I just hope that if there are any updates with the medical corridor or anything of that nature, hopefully we can listen to that. But that's all I have for tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Cabrera. Tom Gerald? Who are the next two speakers?
Rafael Burguerras, Robert Perez.
Okay. Good evening, Tom.
Good evening, Mayor. Tom Gerald, speaking on behalf of myself and this case somewhat for the Sundance Center. I spent a bit of time. Mayor Gutierrez, Mayor Pro Tembaca, council members, members of the staff and the public, both in the chambers and watching at home and the net on MP3 TV. First, I'd like to say it was really great to see the acknowledgement of the Building and Safety Month, and Nick was giving me a little of the history of that. And it's a department I've dealt with, not only in this city, but before I came to Moreno Valley. I have backgrounds in building and since I was 18 years old. So I always have a respect for that part of our economy and our community infrastructure. So I'm glad to see it. But at a debate for the Council for Candidates a couple of weeks ago, there was a, some information brought forth by Roy Blackert, which I thought was very telling. And what he talked about was a decline in the purchasing power of the residents of the city. By, he did a bit of a computation, but I went over it with him today, and I think he's right in the money of at least 30%, which is huge. And then that's coupled by a decline in income levels and by about $5,000 a year and over a five-year period. And those aren't good indicators. I, you know, I use our little center as a, I don't know how to say it, a little barometer there for our city. Our rents today are about, at best, 60 cents on the dollar what they were in the, in the 1980s. And, you know, when you got commercial properties performing like that, you know, it's not a good indicator. It's not just us. I mean, I, everybody in that industry is struggling. It's a tough industry because of, you know, changes in the internet and so on and so forth. But long story short, you know, we gotta watch where we're going. And the key thing is to get the higher-income people out here. And what was interesting was everybody in that room that was debating that night, you know, they, they want more police. They want nice restaurants. They want nice stores to shop in. But it takes income to do that. And so, and one thing bluntly I'd like to see brought back was Councilman Gaiba was working on this annexation. You know, we've got some of the most incredible hillside vistas in Southern California. I mean, I'll put them up against anything, anywhere. And, you know, it's something we need to take a hard look at. About five, six weeks ago, there's a show called Mortgage Madness. It's going up to here. I don't know if it's still on the net or not, sponsored by a major mortgage company. The number one hot market for mortgages were the jumbles. And by the jumbles, I don't mean 2, 3, 4, or 500,000, into the millions for, and for the high-end housing. And so my question is, how many of those are we landing here in this city so that the doctors and these plan administrators can live here in this city? So, thank you very much.
Rafael Burguerras, followed by Robert Perez and Christopher Malden.
Good evening, Rafael.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, staff, residents, and guests. My topic tonight is for Mr. Gaiba. I believe that Mr. Gaiba owes Luisa Palmer an apology for accusing her of not being truthful on November, on April 18th. It bothered me. It bothered me tremendous, Mr. Gaiba, that somebody that supported you, can pay for you, and got you elected, how you attacked her and scolded her on public TV. You shouldn't have done that because she was telling the truth. I was here that day when you clapped for Brian Lawwell after the mayor made a decision to have Ray Baker and Brian Lawwell to be appointed. And it is true that Marquez, that third vote made the difference of us not going to liability because of that vote. And again, through all that process, you voted four times no for everything in your district. You put your district in jeopardy by voting four times no. But I went to the video, November 4th, when the mayor appointed Brian Lawwell and Ray Baker on the 3-1 vote, 3-1 vote. And he asked them, were they here? To stand up, and you applauded. You applauded, and you applauded. And it shows it very, very well on November 4th. For those that are listening tonight, go to November, April 4th. April 4th, and I tell you, through the video, it's long, but an hour and 30 minutes into the video, you can see Mr. Gaiba clapping. Clapping very well because in the video shows Brian Lawwell standing for your applause and everyone else's. So Luisa was right. You should apologize to her tonight in the public because you accused her, somebody that supported you. I went looking and I found the truth. Shame on you to do that to a resident in your district. You should be paying attention to your district and your district only. The mayor has a job for four districts. You have one. You're not the mayor like you told him. He's not the king. Pay attention to your district. Do not accuse residents that supported you. The truth is there. April 4th and April 18th tells the truth how you behave in front of the public. Stick to your district. That is your district too.
Counsel prerogative. Thank you. Rafael, I think you're mistaken. The council members up here are five. Not only do we represent our districts, but we have a fiduciary responsibility to the city of Moreno Valley. That's why we vote on issues of Moreno Valley. So we have a twofold responsibility, one to our district and one to our city, as you'll find out tonight, because we have to vote on the budget and other things. So if you're going to make those accusations to me, please understand what you're talking about first. Thank you. I appreciate it very much. Okay, Robert?
Thank you very much for everybody that's getting involved with the business of our city. I'd like to borrow a little bit from everybody, and thank you very much to the city and all the first responders that helped out the Box Springs Mutual Water Company. Last week, we had a high-pressure line buried quite deep, and we usually don't work at that depth, so it was a little bit extra difficult. And we had to shut the water off, and the city responded with water and safety, traffic, traffic safety. So thank you very much. I'd like to thank for all the residents who cooperated and were patient. We delivered water to them, and whether they needed to drink or to flush their toilets or for cooking, we did it throughout the night. And several commercial businesses made it available, water available to them by just what, I guess what you would call the private-public partnership. And everything came together very well. I think parts of the city are, you know, unifying and working together to resolve problems. I think it's really important that you do focus on your district, but you might want to take a look and drive to other districts to see what we're missing in Edgemont. And I think there's a lot of improvements that are being done in Edgemont with sewer and water and street improvements, but I think we could still use a little bit more. And once again, thank you for all the first responders. I think they were very professional and very patient as well. And I think we all learned something that night, and once again, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Chris? How you doing, Chris?
Actually, a lot better if you answer what I'm about to ask you.
Okay.
I had a question for you. Not that I'm trying to slander or judge anybody or anything like this. I'm just asking a question. I want to ask, because I don't know if we both answered it. What were you doing in Riverside supporting the gas initiative when you said, when you were running and I helped you get elected, that you were against taxing like that? I thought. Why did you support? Was it because of your affiliation with the party you're with, or what? Because I have to ask. I've been your friend a long time, and I'm trying to be nice about it because I, you were level with me all the time while you were running, and I've always been level with you. But I think in front of the whole city and on TV, everybody deserves an answer right now if you haven't already answered it.
Well, Chris, I'll go ahead and address that with you right after the meeting. But, you know, the, the governor's office, you know, was going there, and I received an invitation, and, and I attended, along with, along with other council members that are here as well that attended as well, and staff and from other councils and from other cities.
My question is, were you supporting the gas tax? That was my question.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and hey, one last thing. Nothing against you guys, but there's a lot of stuff going on in this town that I think needs working on. I see a lot of stuff where money's used in ways that doesn't help the residents. Rafael's right, too. When somebody disrespects somebody, there should be an apology made, too. He's my friend. I've known him for a long time, and I, if he's hurt, there's a reason he's saying something up here. Anyways, I guess that's it.
Thank you, Chris. Next speaker, please. Next three speakers.
No more speakers.
Okay, would any of the council members like to make their comments, their closing comments earlier? Okay, I see none. We're now going on to the consent calendar, Joint Consent Calendar, Sections A through D. All items listed under the Consent Calendar Sections A, B, C, and D are considered to be routine and non-controversial and may be enacted by one motion unless a member of the Council, Community Services District, City as Successor Agency, for the Community Redevelopment Agency, Housing Authority, or the Board of Library Trustees requests that an item be removed for separate action. The motion to adopt the Consent Calendar is deemed to be a separate motion by each agency and shall be so recorded by the city clerk. Items withdrawn for reporter discussion will be heard after public hearing items. Okay, and I have Councilmember Marquez. You have anything for discussion or removal?
Yeah, I'd like to, on A2, number one, pull that for discussion.
A2?
A2, number one. And A5.
And A5. Okay. Go ahead and start off with your discussion or question.
Yeah, June 6th is, everybody's aware of the election day for District Four. It's not a nat, natural election day. Our city is only going to the election box for one district. 2,000 people might vote, 1,500 might vote, but are we going to stop city business? Two thousand people might vote, fifteen hundred might vote, but are we going to stop city business on that date? So that many people can go vote? We have 205,000 people in this city. We're going to deprive them of us not doing our job up here because we have an election coming up? I don't think we should cancel this date. I think it should be a regular council meeting because shortly after that, we're going on vacation on summer break. So there ain't going to be any, any city business conducted unless there's a special meeting. So I ask, let's not cancel this meeting, let's have a, a regular council meeting for that day.
Okay. And A5, did you have something on A5?
Yeah, A5. As I was going through the payment register, I noticed several entries in there. One that I was never aware of, and I don't know if that many people are aware of the shopping cart retrievals. You know that the city of Moreno Valley pays to have those shopping carts picked up and taken back to the businesses. That's got to change. The city's got to do something. We cannot provide that service to these businesses. I had suggested that we maybe have something at City Yards where these markets or businesses come by and pick up their carts and charge them for every one that we pick up. It's not our responsibility as a city to make sure that these carts are, stays on their premises. It might not be a large amount of money, but you know what? Any type, any large, or any amount of money would be useful for other parts of the city, nonprofit groups. So I ask that the city look into this and when it comes to contract time, to see about redoing the contract and putting some other words in there. I, I just can't, can't understand why we would be paying for shopping carts, just don't understand that. Secondly, I had a phone call about an entry on here, it's called Community Now, Spare, Safe Roots. They asked me, how come this organization only, well, receives $117,977? And I think I probably should address this to Marshall. Can you explain why this nonprofit group gets so much money, Marshall?
Councilman Marquez, I'm going to refer that to our public works director as, as Community Now and Safe Roots to school is a transportation program.
Yeah, that's, that's an activity that is under transportation engineering and they promote non-motorized activities for schools and, and schoolchildren.
Ahmad, and, and could you please explain the source of the funding?
The source of the funding is grants.
Okay, there's grants, it's not from general fund or anything from the city.
It's not coming from the general fund city, no.
Okay, because on the registry, it doesn't show that and, and I was asked about that and I didn't know. So, thank you for the answer, I appreciate it. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, council member Geiba?
Yeah, thank you.
What items do you want to discuss?
A2, number one, pulled for a separate vote.
Okay.
I have a tendency to agree with Mr. Marquez.
Is that it?
Yeah, that's it sir, absolutely.
Alright, so I'm going to go ahead and enter, actually, public comments on the consent calendar? Do we have any?
None.
Okay, entertaining motion by council to approve the consent calendar except A2.
Almost.
Okay, moved by council, Mayor Pro Tembaca.
I'll second it.
Second by Geiba. Okay, moves us on to item A2.
Honorable Mayor and council members, for staff's clarification, was the item pulled the entire A2 or A2-1 only?
A2-1.
A2-1 only, thank you.
For a separate vote.
For a separate vote.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and hear item A2-1, which just says cancel the June 6, 2017 council meeting. And I'll just go ahead and start off, you know, by just saying, it's actually been the history, you know, pretty much for the council, when it's usually election day for us to cancel it. I know you're not involved in those meetings, but we have cabinet-level meetings with, you know, the Mayor Pro Tem. I know you were involved in those before when you were Mayor Pro Tem, but what we do there is we determine, you know, when agenda items or which types of items get placed. And one of the things that we, we notice is there's not a lot of items there. So, and also historically, we've always canceled it on election day. So that's why that's on there. Anybody have any questions or?
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, because this has historically been done in the city, staff is very mindful when we're planning agenda items for your consideration. And so we have planned accordingly so that, so that there are no pressing items that would need to be taken up that day, recognizing of course, it is the council's prerogative as to when to meet.
Councilman Geiba?
Well, thank you Tom. And that's, I think that's, it doesn't have to be done the same way every time and, and I agree with Dave. That is a small election affecting only a small, only one district. And, and I appreciate you and the staff setting it up in such a fashion. So I would agree with, with David and say that we, I wouldn't want to cancel that June 6 council meeting and keep it light. So I'm going to move. And what would be the proper motion on that, Pat? That we vote no on the cancellation of the June meeting? That, that?
Make a motion to not cancel that meeting.
Okay, I make a motion then to not cancel that meeting and I ask for a second.
Second.
Okay, go ahead and call a voice vote.
Councilmember Geiba?
I'm voting to not cancel that meeting.
Councilmember Marquez?
I'm voting not to cancel that meeting.
Mayor Pro Tembaca?
Yes.
Yares?
Yes.
Now we split, explain that one.
It's a split.
So you're voting no for the cancellation, correct?
Basically, if there's two, go ahead and if you want to explain.
Thank you, honorable mayor, council members, the, the regular meeting schedule is set. So those meetings are on the schedule unless canceled. So therefore,
We didn't cancel.
This action that was just taken, that's what I was trying to, is, is really didn't, didn't move anything forward because right now the meeting is scheduled, what's before you is the decision whether or not to cancel it. So if there is no motion to cancel it, then the meeting will stay on the calendar as scheduled.
And you have to have a quorum in order for the meeting to
That is correct, absolutely.
Correct, right?
Okay, that was an interesting remark.
Alright, so. Okay, there goes that. Yeah, we've already, yeah, it's been the consent, yes. Okay, we're going to go to item E, public hearing to adopt, but however, you have a comment to say?
I have a comment. Mayor, I would like to pull item E2-2 off the agenda and have a study session on that item.
Sure, that's fine.
Honorable Mayor Pro Tem, was that E2-2?
E2-2, yes.
Thank you. The providing support to the crossing guard program?
Yes.
Because you'd like a study session on that?
Yes.
Are we on item E2, A1?
Recognizing that I was the one that proposed that, I'll go ahead and second that too.
Point of order.
Okay, one second please.
No point of order please, that's it, that's why I'm point of ordering it. I want a clarification, are we on E1 or E2? I thought we started on E1.
Okay, she just had a comment, she had a comment about E2.
I thought we were working on E1, whether you're commenting E2.
Public hearings, E.
Oh, E1 or E2?
She asked, she asked for a comment and I approved it, so that's why she
I get that, but we aren't necessarily dealing with E2 as a special comment. So, are, I'm asking just the question, are we dealing with E1 or E2, not a comment from the Pro Tem? Which one are we working with?
E2.
Thank you.
Yes.
It's always easy to answer, wasn't it?
Yeah, well, I think she said it several times, but.
No, we started with E1.
Alright, okay, so E2 is going to be pulled for a study session.
E2-2.
Yeah, E2-2, yes. Pulled for a study session based on Mayor Pro Tem's request. Okay, so now that moves us back to E1, public hearing to adopt the 2017-2018 Annual Action Plan, Report of Marshall Ironman Financial and Management Services.
Good evening, honorable mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, city council members. The item this evening is to conduct the final public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant, the Home Investment Partnership and the Emergency Solutions Grant programs, which, and the public hearing will allow an opportunity for comment on the proposed 2017-18 Annual Action Plan. Every year, the city is required to submit an annual action plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The annual action plan identifies how the CDBG home and ESG program funds will be utilized during the program year and the projects that benefit the low and moderate income households and neighborhoods. It also serves as the city's official grant application to HUD. For the 2017-18 CDBG recommendations, the CDBG program, its primary, primary objective is to develop viable urban communities by providing decent housing, suitable living environment and expanded economic opportunities principally for persons of low and moderate income. At the prior public hearing, we walked through the individual items just as a high level. There's approximately $2 million that's available through this program. For public services, there's a 15% cap, so there's about $289,000 that goes to many of these programs being food and shelter and community services. The remaining pro, program funding of about $1.3 million is available for other activities. Many of these end up being spent more towards ADA improvements and those items. Following the last March 21st public hearing, funding for the Graham Street Bridge Study was removed from the proposed recommendations and that funding was reallocated for a potential traffic signal project at Alessandro and Grant. So we're looking at that as one replacement project within this item. All other proposed funding remains as previously presented to the city council. For the 2017-18 home recommendations, this program is really to include expanding the supply of decent and affordable housing in the community. For this item, we receive in excess of $500,000 through the grant program. A portion of this is required for community housing development organizations, or CHODOs, which is about $79,000. The rest is available for other activities. Typically in this area, we have about one applicant that applies for this and it would go to Habitat for Humanity of approximately $120,000. As we've experienced less demand for these home dollars, we're currently seeking new programs to utilize these funds and we should be returning to city council shortly with some proposed alternatives on how we can reinvest this money back into the community. The last item is the 2017-18 ESG recommendations or the Emergency Solutions Grant. These dollars are really focused to assist, protect and improve the living conditions of homeless. This fund provides about $180,000 to the community towards these homeless efforts. All proposed funding remains as previously presented to the city council on this item. In a summary of all of the funding requests and recommended activities are included in attachment onto the staff report. One thing to note is as of the date of this report, the final funding from HUD has not been released. We'll be looking towards the federal budget to see what our fin- final allocation is and we'll bring back to council any significant changes for their further dialogue and discussion. With that, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you so much, Marshall, for the brief report. Okay, we'll go to council questions, council member Geiba?
Thank you. Marshall, just for the record, how much did MoVan get again?
The Friends of Moreno Valley Senior Center is receiving $35,000, which is in line with prior years.
I ask that because we had a couple of supporters of the MoVan, I wanted to make sure and I said, I'd make sure for you that that happened. The other item, last time we voted on this, so the record is really clear. The motion was done in such a fashion as to have asked to remove one item.
Yes.
And now you're telling us that it's being replaced with another item. But I don't remember the council having that discussion of replacing it or anything. I would like us to do that before we make that correction or change. Because I don't have the full implications of what that change was all about as we met earlier on these things. And as far as I knew, up until that moment, everybody was in agreement with what they had in front and we were supposed to discuss those things. And, and the motion was made differently than the recommendation by staff, which is the recommendation most people were doing on the agenda. So I'd like to be able to have that discussion because quite honestly, I thought, I, I, as I spoke to you on it, I thought that was a good idea to do a study on an alternate south-north, north-south passageway because we only have three. So how can I get that, that back there for a discussion? For the record anyway, that's my, that's what I would like to happen. I would, don't think I would like the, that to be removed and if it does, it's, that's fine, it'll be the three votes, but I'd like to have that discussion. So can somebody give me a hand on that one? Because it was done a little bit irregularly.
Go ahead, okay, we're going to, any more questions from the council? No? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open the hearing. Any public testimony, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we have Velma Pruitt. Carol Lee Allen.
Alright. Hi Velma.
Hello. Okay, I'm, you're, we are here representing the Friends of Moreno Valley. We operate the MoVan for the senior citizens and we would sure like to have it approved. What we do is, for instance, for the month of March, we took 512 senior citizens to the senior center and to the shopping and which they had no other way to go. I know we have other transportations, but they have to pay for that. For instance, the dollar ride, I think costs $3. We do not charge anything, it's always a donation and most people give us a dollar. And that way you have, for the month of March, 512 seniors that actually got out of their home, which they, that's the only transportation that they can afford. And we'd love to see you approve it. And more if possible.
Thank you Velma.
You're welcome.
So, my name is Ladonna Jemson. This is all part of the three minutes, so I'll also encourage, you know, I don't think people are really aware of the value of this MoVan project. With our senior population growing and all of us are getting there soon, we may have to utilize the MoVan project ourselves, but to have curb-to-curb service is major because many of our seniors are disabled in some capacity and are unable to get to a centralized location, which is how dial-a-ride works. They will not come to the home, they will, it will actually be a centralized location and if you can't get there, then you don't get the ride. So it's very important that everyone knows that they take the seniors to the medical appointment, shopping, senior center. It really improves the quality of life because these seniors would have to be at home, recluse sometimes because they have no way to get around. So this project is all that the city provides, that we provide as the Friends of Moreno Valley Senior Center. And extremely important because it, we need the support for the seniors to be able to get around. We also have to remember that many of them have lived here for many, many years and been an important factor for our city and has really invested in our and been an important factor for our city, and has really invested in our community. So, we need to look out for them also. So, as Velma had stated, we appreciate consideration of the $35,000. If there's anything left over anywhere else, we welcome that. We do have a contract service of $112,000 that it costs to run that project. That's a lot of money. So, when you compare $35,000 to $112, it's not a lot, but it sure is appreciated. So, please, consider yourself, consider your families and your seniors, and their inability to shop, have good times with other seniors, going to their medical appointments, because that's what would happen without the MoVan project. So, thank you, council members, mayor, for considering this. We hope that you go ahead and approve it.
Thank you.
Also, thank you.
Thank you, Velma. Any more speakers, Madam Clerk?
Done.
Go ahead and close the hearing. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move to deliberation. We'll do one round. Go ahead and push your speaker button, please, if you'd like to speak. Madam Clerk, can we take the second top of there?
Yeah, I'm not on the timer.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and do three minutes. Thank you.
I'm very proud to say that for the past two years, I've worked very diligently with Marshall on the CDBG grant program. I think it was myself that actually got the money for the students for $20,000 for the people. I love this program. I've always worked hard to keep it. The one thing I didn't agree with at the last round that we discussed it was the removal of the north-south corridor study, which I thought was very valuable for the safety. And eventual, we'll be talking about, hopefully, an earthquake initiative. We need to have another transportation corridor out of the city to the north and to the south. Three major ones is probably not sufficient. So, removing that was very disappointing to me, that we should have had that conversation. Additionally, the money was reallocated to something else. And I never had an opportunity to review that information and discuss it, or deliberate on it, or even vote on it, for that matter. That being said, I would never hold up this CDBG grant. I would just ask that we find a way to make sure that conversation happens before final approval of this document. That's all.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tembaka, please.
I just want to thank staff for the diligence that you gave to this funding. I know it's difficult. I know that there's a lot of applications. And I'm just very grateful for the grants that come in to fund services for our community, whether it's our seniors, our children, the homeless, the CASA program, the court-appointed special advocates for our kids. We had a speaker here at the last meeting who advocated for these childrens, and I'm just very proud to be able to work on this and approve this project, or the funding for these three programs. Thank you.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yeah, I want to thank staff for their... All the work they've done on this, Marshall and your staff. Yeah, I would love to see more money for these nonprofit groups, especially this MoVan. These nonprofit groups out there, if you want money from the city, there's an application time that you have to apply for these. You can't do it throughout the year. And to correct me if I'm wrong, Marshall, it's in January of each year to apply for these nonprofit group grants. I've had some come to my office, February, March, and ask me, "Can you help us get some money?" At that time, I didn't know until I spoke to Marshall, and it is only in January. There's a deadline. So, in the future, nonprofit groups, if you need some money or want some money, turn in that application. And I would say, "When's the earliest you can do that, Marshall?"
They can actually reach out to us any point in the year to get their name on our kind of distribution list, and then that way, we can make sure we contact them as we do our public hearing notices.
Okay. So, it's anytime, but the... To get that money is determined or approved during the month of January, when the applications are due. So, I just want to let everybody know that. Secondly, is... I would love to get more money for the MoVan. I believe I spoke to them beginning of the year, right after I was elected. When I was told that that's how the seniors get around, I was amazed that we only had one van throughout the city. I would love to see more vans available in the future. Again, you know, we have Dollar Ride, there's... You know, the seniors gotta pay their fares, but they're on a fixed budget, and you know, $4, $5, that's a lot to a lot of seniors. So, in the future, I'd like to see if we can work on that, and possibly help them out with more money and get them another van. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Marquez. I look forward to, you know, working with you on that as well. I know we're on the Finance Committee. So, go ahead and close the deliberation.
Mayor, if I may, just add one comment in here. The direction from the City Council, and I believe it's the March 21st, the last public hearing, the direction there was to move forward with the projects as planned, with the substitution of the Graham Street for the traffic signal. So, I just wanted to make sure we were moving forward with the direction from prior City Council.
Yes, okay. Entertain a motion by council to approve staff's recommendations, numbers two through five.
Second, I mean, I make the motion, I move.
Okay, so, motion by Mayor Pro Tembaka, second by Marquez. Please vote. And it's approved 4-0. I'm gonna go to item E2, Adoption of Fiscal Year 2017-2018, Report of Financial Management Services. Marshall?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Wait a second for the presentation to come up here. The item this evening is for the proposed adoption of the budget as presented to the City Council. Following the March 28th meeting of City Council, we've conducted multiple public hearings with the community, and we've brought forward to you this evening the final proposed budget for your consideration. We... As we know with the calendar, we've gone through multiple items. As I mentioned, on April 12th and April 15th, we did have two town hall meetings, which moved us forward to the item this evening for discussion. Looking back at how the budget was developed, the primary goals of this was really to build it on the foundation of the strategic plan. The council had set this plan forward, which provided us all the details for what we wanted to look for in the adjustments in the budget. So, really, as we moved forward, any increases to public safety, code enforcement, any of those items were really driven by the fact that the City Council had provided a nice plan through that, with the addition of continuing to maintain a balanced budget. So, those two primary items led to the development of this budget tonight. As we look sort of through the general fund revenues, our main items to look at are our property tax dollars. That is where we're continuing to see growth. Again, what we've experienced coming out of the recession, we still have some assessment appeals that we're beginning to see those return into higher property values. With resales in the marketplace and new development, our property tax dollars are strong and growing. The utility users' tax has been a stable piece of the city. Over the years, it's diminishing as a larger percent of the general fund revenues, and this looks to remain stable going forward. One large item of increase is the transient occupancy tax. As we're all aware, the voters approved an increase from 8% to 13%. So, that coupled along with some potential hotel projects in the city have provided for an increase in the TOT revenue to support activities. When we look down at sort of the new development that's occurring, the new economic development in the area, we do see charges for services, different licenses and permits that continue to grow. Those are indicators of continued growth within our community. And as development slows down, you'll see an impact in those in the future. Where we look at kind of the general fund from the highest level, when we look at revenues and expenditures, the current 1617 amended budget is right above break-even there, $24,000. We're continuing to be positive for the next two years. So, with any proposed revenues, we've refocused that into many areas, such as, again, the priorities of Momentum of Val being different areas of code enforcement, economic development, and public safety. This just kind of gives you an idea of the general fund expenditures. One thing to note is, you'll see that really the departments that are non-public safety, really by the end of the two years, are essentially flat with where we are today, as we continue to invest more into our public safety over the two-year budget. Some of the key changes within this proposed item, through the City Council, we do have the strategic priority of Higher Moval. That's a $50,000 investment for each fiscal year that will directly impact the creation of 100 new jobs each fiscal year. We're looking at an option of kind of lighting the M on the hill for a year-round. We did earmark a little bit of money in there through the Moreno Valley utility. That is something that we'll come back to council for discussion before those expenditures occur. We are looking at increasing translation services, some equipment purchases, along with the temporary individuals to come in and do some of the translation services through the meeting. So, that's an option that we have proposed in these areas. As we look at some of the increases for the city clerk, for every two years, we'll have three seats up for election. So, you'll see in the budget, the clerk's total budget goes up and down between each year. The second year really increases due to the election cost as we move forward. A big component of our kind of reinvestment into Moreno Valley is the focus on economic development. In this area, we're proposing three additional management analysts that will really aid in workforce development, marketing, reaching out to those businesses to make sure that they're aware of the value of being located in Moreno Valley. And with this, we also increase different marketing and advertising budgets to make sure we are hitting all avenues available to the city. Again, with economic development, one thing that came up at the last moment was the Employment Resource Center that we currently utilize to not only find our citizens' jobs or new positions, but also to help the new businesses find employees. We need to look at funding that lease going forward. For a period of time, the shopping center has provided us that location free of charge, but actually, given the higher demand for some of these locations, they're at a point now that their vacancy rate is very low, and they'll need to charge it as we move forward. So, we have up to $100,000 to fund the ERC in this location. And then, as we look at community development, and really some of our investment in beautification in the community, we're expanding some of the code staffing. We'll be adding two additional code officers, along with some adjustments to different staffing, and then looking at contract support, whether that's with building and safety, along with planning services. And then, the last item here, which really is a big-ticket item, is the investment into the city's general plan. This hasn't been updated for a while, and it's a really good item to move forward over the next two years to invest this. It's $1.75 million, and planning will be coming back with kind of proposed timeline and objectives as they move into this process. So, again, that's one item. We'll set the money aside, and we'll come back with different study items to work through that process. As we look at public safety as being one of the city's priorities, the focus from the Momentum of Val really was to increase patrol deputies within the community. The budget actually will increase our ratio to .75 officers by adding two additional patrol deputies. When we look at the fire department, we're looking at funding a new fire squad, which would provide six new fire positions, help meet our increased demands, and really provide a benefit to health and safety out in the community. And then, the last item is with our fire truck number two. We're at the point in time that that needs to be replaced. We have set aside replacement funds for that item, and we're just proposing, moving forward, to replacing this. Currently, it's a 2008 truck. We do have a backup of a 2002. We would dispose of the older truck, move the 2008 to backup, and that will make sure that we have consistent service. When we look at the staffing for City Hall, we did want to note that we're only proposing an increase of one over the two fiscal years. As you see from the chart, we've significantly cut staffing through the recession. We've maintained the goal of operating efficiently and not looking at increasing staff, but increasing services first and foremost. We do have six defunded positions. These positions are vacant, so it will not impact individuals. But we're really reprogramming that cost into areas that provides a better service, such as the code compliance officers, the management analysts, and economic development. We do have a public safety contract administrator. With police and fire being approximately 65% of the city's budget, this is a key area that we really want to focus on, that contract management. And so, we have the new public safety contract administrator. We'd be replacing a deputized position that was doing administrative duties with this individual to look at that. And the last item is a senior accountant position. So, following our operational audit, this is one piece that we can reinvest in the accounting area to make sure that we're prepared and monitoring for any items that come through. Outside the general fund, we... There are many operations that run out of our Community Services District, such as Parks and Recreation, along with our library, and many of our landscape maintenance districts. In this item, what you'll see across the board is really, we're maintaining a balanced budget. When we look at the bottom line, we're 430 to the positive, or 335. The funding in these areas are very restricted to those specific purposes. Many of these are voter-approved taxes or assessments, and so they're restricted to each line item. Any positive fund balance goes directly back to the fund balance to reinvest in those areas. Just focusing on one area of the Community Services District is our library services. A key item in this strategic plan was looking at expanding library services. We're continuing with this direction, with the hope of opening a satellite library prior to December 2017. We're looking at approximately 4,800-square-foot storefront facility. We'd be utilizing some of the development impact fees that are used for kind of the infrastructure, building, the tenant improvements, and the material. And the annual lease and operations, we'd be funding through the general fund for the next two fiscal years. That'll allow us a period of time to get some feedback on the demand for this area. And then, as we look at, you know, future expansion of library facilities, we can revisit that through what funding we have for a facility and what funding we may need for the annual operations, looking at whether there's a parcel charge or some other item that the council may want us to move forward with. With that, that wraps up kind of the high-level items of the budget. As we said, this sets forward the... Pretty much the same items that were presented on March 28th and some of the prior study sessions, along with the town halls. And with that, I'm available for questions.
Just wanted to thank you for all the hard work that you've done, especially with the town halls and hosting one on a weekday, actually, a weeknight, and then also on the weekend, and also the study sessions that we've held on these items.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and members of the council, we'd like to thank you. The input that you provided us in this budget process really allowed it to move smoothly. As you know, there are a lot of moving pieces to this. And your direct input, your participation in these study sessions, the strategic plan, that was the underlying philosophy for this document. It's all come together very nicely, and we appreciate very much your leadership in this effort.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the hearing. Any public?
Yes, Tom Gerald.
Only Tom?
Tom Gerald, again, speaking on behalf of myself, Mayor Gutierrez, Mayor Pro Tembaka, council members, members of staff and the public, both in the chambers are watching at home. I... First of all, I like the idea of setting, pulling that school guard thing for a study session. That's a political hot potato, and it's probably not... Obviously, it's not done yet. And... But bottom line on that subject... But bottom line on that subject, I think we need to start setting our minds to send a real clear message to the school district. And I got thinking, aren't we providing guards for the?
The item was pulled, Tom, so it's only the budget.
All I wanted to say is that we need to have that message, you know, it's not him cold turkey, that, you know, we're expecting them to pick up part of the tab at least. So I wanted to get that out. And so, but I do like the idea of the study session. And then one other thing, I was told that the item H, there's not gonna be any comments taken on, is that correct? It's now reports. And well, I think this fits here because we are expending money for the study of the police JPA, are we not? So hence, it would be a budget item, am I correct? The city Marina Valley has advanced money to, somewhere to pay for that feasibility study. And as such, I'd like to get a report on, you know, what's going on with that, either under that venue or council comments or, you know, someplace in the deal here, because that, you know, police protection, as Mr. Buckets says, our number-one priority. Thank you, police and fire.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, any deliberation?
No more speakers, mayor.
Okay. All right, I'll go ahead and close the hearing. Entertain a motion?
No.
Didn't get a chance to ask any questions either, so.
Councilman Gaba?
First of all, I'd like to pull items one, was gonna pull two, but you wanna go with study session, and item three and item four for separate votes.
And do you have a second?
Second.
And then I have some more questions. So that was my first question, I'd like to do that. Second one was, I was going through the, your draft class specifications for the public safety contracts administrator and for the strategic initiatives manager, both very, very, I don't know, kind of cross each other's boundaries. So first question I had before I vote on anything is, who is doing all these things now?
Councilman Gaba, Mayor, Mayor Protim, Councilman Marquez. Right now, the, there is no one doing the functions outlined under the class spec for public safety contracts administrator. As you know and we do, over sixty million dollars is spent every year on those contracts and there isn't a comprehensive look at those. We believe that, we're recommending it to you because of the expenditure and the consequence and the high priority of these services, we believe that it certainly warrants a dedicated look.
Thank you. But who's been doing the dedicated look on the contracts in the past years?
There is not the level of in-depth analysis that this position would provide. Right now, we review invoices as we can, but there's not, not the level of concerted effort that we believe is warranted for an expenditure of that magnitude.
Hey, maybe I'm not asking the question correctly. Who has been doing it? What person in the city has been doing this not-so-in-depth contract? Is it finance, is it you, Marshall?
Finance receives the invoices and recommends their approval. It is not a line-by-line review as we feel is warranted as your professional administrative team.
Okay, so now that, that's the public safety contracts administrator?
Yes.
So as I read that, you were also alluding to a lot of other things, other than just public safety contracts?
Actually, there are elements of that class spec that are broad administrative analyst-type duties. What we try to do is cast them broadly so that it's a broader description. You never want to get into a position where an incumbent is asked to do tasks that are beyond the scope. So if you look at any of our class specifications, they're intentionally written broadly, but at the, at the appropriate level.
Yeah, and I ask these questions, Tom, not to put anybody on the spot, but we have two new, basically, we're creating two new positions, am I correct?
On a, on a net basis, we are, we are creating, we are recommending one new position for the general fund. The, the position, the other one that you pulled, the strategic initiatives manager, that, what we would do there, that is recommending conversion of an existing position to that classification. There would be no change in salary, no change in benefits. It is just a broadening of duties assigned to the incumbent.
So for the public safeties contract administrator, I know when we did the JPA, and let me just make that comment right now so Tom knows, the JPA, Tom, was a collective paid by all the nine cities and it came out of the manager's discretionary money. So it didn't come out of the general fund. It was just a study that was pulled. So along with that, there was a lot of data and information on, on how to do the contracts information. Is this what you're kind of balancing that off of, is that potential future JPA?
Actually, Councilman Gaba, you bring up an excellent point there. That's an example of a kind of specialized function that we need pay, attention paid to. The public safety contracts administrator would be instrumental to our review of further information and should there be formation of a police JPA, if you and other cities, city council members support that, that position would be key to safeguarding our interests and helping put that together in a way that best serves our community.
Thank you. Those are my questions. But I'm, the budget is fluid, is it not?
It is a snapshot of the parade, councilman.
Yeah, so there's, there's also opportunities down the road. If we want to correct or change anything, it is, we can do that at any point in time.
Absolutely, and we frequently do in council meetings whenever changes, appropriation changes are recommended for your consideration.
I remember Marshall always telling us that this is not locked in stone because things change and when things change, we can change things. Thank you very much, Tom.
Any other council member have any comments or no? Okay, entertain a motion by council to approve staff recommendations numbers one through four?
It's all moved.
I asked for that to be done separately, please?
Yes, you asked, but there was no, there was no vote.
Yes.
It was seconded, but there was not a vote.
Well, then pulling something wasn't a vote either.
City attorney?
City attorney, would you please clarify because I'm asking for those to be separate votes, that's all.
The item was presented as a single item, one through four. Two was removed from the agenda, so it's actually one, three, and four. It's a single motion. The council as a body has the opportunity to take that into separate pieces, but that would require a motion, a motion which was made, a second that was made. The only thing that was missing was a vote.
Okay, then clarify.
The council votes, I'm sorry. If the council votes in affirmative, then you will take each item separately, yes.
Okay, then clarify for me. Then, then do we have council, any council member can remove any item without a vote?
The items on the agenda can be removed, yes.
Without a vote?
That's a prerogative of the chair.
Because I know when we remove things from item A, we put them in F, and then we vote on them independently.
Those are the consent items, yeah.
Those were the consent items, right.
All right, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve items one, two, three, and four? One, three, and four?
All moved.
Okay, I'll go ahead and.
Mayor, you also have the opportunity to take the rest of the budgets for the housing authority for the community.
Oh, yes, thank you for.
In the same motion, on a separate one.
Yes, thank you.
That's up to the council.
Yeah, thank you for reminding me about that. So I entertain a motion to approve staff recommendations numbers one, three, and four, all items under E two. Obviously, E two-two was pulled, okay? And that includes the CSD, the housing authority, and the successor agency and related items. Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Go ahead and please vote.
No, who did the second?
I did the, I guess I can do the second. And it passes three and one abstention. Okay. Why does it say two yess? Okay, because an abstention counts as like a no vote. Is that why it says no vote on there?
The count is wrong on the bottom. I don't know why, but it's not.
On my screen, it shows three ayes and one abstentions.
Okay, I know. Okay, thanks. And I just want to say a few words really quick here, that we're celebrating as a city a two-year balanced budget, which is a really great thing, and I really applaud the council members up here that approved the balanced budget, also for more patrol, more police on the ground, also to expand our library services. This is really going to be an amazing thing, and I know a lot of people have really asked for that. So this is gonna be a great thing for our city. Okay, we're gonna go to H, reports. And Tom, I know you had a question about the H item, right? So I'm gonna defer to the city attorney, that he can respond to that.
Thank you, Roble, Mayor, Mayor Protim, and council members. And I know there's, there's been some past practice of having items that actually exist on the agenda being subject to a pulling and public comment. The Brown Act provides that, that only items of business that are under legislative body consideration are subject to a public comment. Public comment, and public has the right either prior or during the deliberation to address the council. But items that are simply either informational or reports or other items on the agenda, pledge of allegiance, for example, that's an item on the agenda, but that does not rise to a level of having public comment on it. So in accordance with the Brown Act, there is no need, or there is no legal requirement to allow public to speak to items under H and the items under H two and H three.
Okay. Thank you. We're gonna go to city council reports on regional activities. I'll go ahead and start the first one. Mine was from the March Joint Powers Commission, providing an update, and it was based on the April twenty-sixth meeting. The JPA, JPC approved a second amendment, actually, to the March Life Care Project, actually, the development agreement, it was a change to the development agreement. And we also received an update from the JPA Planning Department about progress made to develop JPA land and create more jobs in the region. That concludes my report. And we have Councilmember, Councilmember Marquez for Riverside Transit Agency.
Yeah, the RTA is doing their part for cleaner air. With a grant from the South Coast Air Quality Management District, RTA had unveiled its first zero, near-zero emissions natural gas vehicle. On the outside, the forty-foot bus looks similar to other buses in the fleet and run on compressed natural gas. The bus emits ninety percent less nitrogen oxide, but will cut green gases by fifteen percent while delivering better performance. In addition, I want to remind everyone about the RTA Youth Summer Fair Program takes effect June first, twenty seventeen, through September fourth, twenty seventeen. For only twenty-five cents, students in the grades of one through twelve can ride any fixed route bus, including commuter-linked express buses. Commuter-linked, they go quite a ways. They go out of the city, out to other counties. So maybe the bus will be going to the beach, you ride for twenty-five cents. To qualify for the reduced rates, students must show a school ID, school-issued ID card, not, not a driver license, not an ID card. It has to be the school ID or state-issued ID. When they say state, they're talking about the, the school ID cards. And the rate has to be eighteen years or younger. I don't see too many kids nineteen years or twenty still in high school, so. Other than that, that concludes my report.
And then the next one is the Riverside, the Western Riverside Council of Governments, WRCOG. This is just a brief report from yesterday's meeting. We discussed the regional streetlight program activities. We received an update. Eleven local jurisdictions have approved an agreement to acquire SCE-owned streetlights, including the city of Marina Valley. Local control of streetlights allows for future revenue generating opportunities and retrofit of lamps to LED technology for a more cost-saving operation. WRCOG will be working with member jurisdictions on identifying a regional financing option, preparing the transfer of streetlights, hosting workshops, and selecting vendors to provide retrofit services. We also discussed something about, it's called the Community Choice Aggregation Program, and it allows cities and counties to aggregate their buying power and secure electrical energy supply contracts on a region-wide basis for, that it could be a little more cost-effective, cost savings. Several jurisdictions throughout California are pursuing the formation of these CCAs as a way to lower energy costs. And the executive committee directed WRCOG staff to pursue just the preliminary stages, the development of a CCA program focused on the Riverside County area. And that concludes my report for the WRCOG. We have the Regional Conservation Authority. Councilman Gaba?
Thank you. There was several consent items that went through no hitch, but item number ten was the resolution of the Board of Directors, the Western Riverside County Region, to adopt the refinement clarification policy. Staff is familiar with that, most likely, Allen is, and on the clarification of that policy. It had a lot of conversation because that clarification policy can be pretty complicated. But the reality is, in the long run, what it was saying was the RCA is, the RCA staff is not the final EIR determiner, but in fact, the municipalities and the cities were. So that, that went through with a hundred percent vote, everybody agreeing with it when we finally clarified it. Also, the directors of Regional Conservation Authority adopted the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen operating a capital budget. Let me explain something to you. Even on a regional scale, that budget passed twelve to ten. It almost didn't pass. So not everybody always agrees on budgets and what's good and what everybody wants. So you have all those cities, and because it was twelve, that was more than half of what, there's twenty-three bodies that sit there. So I just thought you might enjoy understanding how that goes, too. The biological monitoring program for work plan and cost estimate for fiscal year two seventeen, two eighteen went through without a hitch. We had some land acquisition updates to talk about, and we had two supposed closed sessions. I won't go into details on them, obviously. Fifteen-two was a conference with legal counsel that's on the agenda. That was delayed for another meeting. And then the conference with the real property negotiator, there were some approvals of some other additional properties, but I won't go into details. It's on the agenda if anybody wanted to read it to let you know. So the RCA, once again, is doing its job. RCA is a county, it's dictated by the state. So thank you very much.
Okay. There was no school district, city joint task force, or SCAG?
May I?
Sure.
Okay. Just to remind everybody, SCAG is meeting these next three days for their regional conference and passing of the baton to the new leadership that was elected. So we'll be out there in the desert, but the nice thing about it is tomorrow, we'll be taking a tour with Lucy Jones to the San Andreas Fault Line, because again, I've requested that study session on creating a team to look at the long-term disadvantages to that. So after I come back from that conference, then we'll have something more in detail. But I just want to, I don't know if there's still room for you folks to get your tickets, so to speak, but they've been asking if you want. If you want, you can still probably call up SCAG or go on the website and still get a chance to attend if you like. So it'll be Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and they did acquire a second bus for the tour of the San Andreas Fault. And to add to that, they've invited the March JPA to participate in that with the March Air, Air Reserve Base, having such a potential impact on the region to help in the case of any major earthquake. So I just wanted to share that, so thank you.
And then really quick, city managers' report? No additional items this evening. City attorneys' report?
None here, mayor.
Okay. Mayor Protimbaca, did you have a comment to say?
Yes, I was hoping that Chief Abdul, our fire chief, would give an update on the debacle we had in Edgemont regarding the Box Springs Mutual Water District pipe that Mr., or Robert Perez mentioned earlier.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protim, and then members of city council. Once we found out that the Box Springs Mutual Water Company had experienced a break in one of their water mains, staff made con- one of their water mains, staff made contact with the, with the water company to find out if there was anything that we could provide to them, to assist them with helping the residents that would not be, that would be without water for initially what was thought to be a 24-hour period. As Box Springs discovered further complications, once they were able to expose the site, they realized that there was potential for the loss of water to those residents beyond the 24-hour period. We then went out to the site, along with the other members of city staff and city departments, to, one, offer our assistance, so that they could, to assist them in mitigating the actual break, and to provide whatever resources were necessary to, to help them through the repair process, as well as to provide the citizens with any resources that they may have needed at that time. Working with their staff, we were able to assist them with equipment. We were also able to make contact with several of the residents and provide them additional water sources in, to make them better prepared to deal with a multiple-period or multiple-day loss of water. Fortunately, later on that evening, they, Box Springs was able to make the repair and restore services to those residents. We continued to monitor the, that, that repair for a couple of days to make sure that there weren't any other complications that they were going to experience, and it ended up in a very short duration, following that initial 24-hour period.
Thank you, Chief Abdul, and I, I just want to say thank you so much for your perseverance, your professionalism, and I also want to thank the Police Department for coming out and diverting the traffic, because you had, you know, a lot of equipment on the street, and the Big Six Market for being there for the residents of, on Cottonwood by the 215, though 215 and Edgemont Street. You did a great job. Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to reports and comments from council members who did not speak earlier. Okay, we'll start with Councilman Gaiaba.
I'd like to hold my comments as, for a little bit longer. I'm getting them together.
Councilmember Marquez?
Tom, you had brought up about the height, we need more or bigger homes, more expensive homes. I met with some developers recently. I can't disclose who they are right now. They didn't want me to. They have come out to Moreno Valley. They have some landowners that will sell to them, and they're talking about building million-dollar homes out in the east end of town. They know about the doctors, the nurses, the professionals that want to live in those type of homes, two-acre homes, acre-and-a-half homes. They have approached me, and most likely, once they, they get their investors together, they'll be coming to the city. But there, there is talk about bringing those homes, type of homes, to Moreno Valley. Secondly, we had a speaker here tonight that kind of was a little upset tonight, asking for some apologies. You know, we sit up here because we're elected. We don't sit up here to, to be crucified up here. We do, we're trying to do it the job as best as we can. This individual, and I'll, I'll, I'll be upfront, this individual accused me in public of destroying my, one of my campaign partners out there, one of the candidates who was running against me, about stealing his signs, ripping them up, and he came to City Hall here and threw them on the floor, and he accused me. Does that make any difference? Shouldn't I ask for an apology? Or, because maybe I wasn't on the council then? But it doesn't give anybody any right to come up here and crucify any of us up here. We're here to do a job. I don't think that was called for, and I expect an apology from that individual to Councilman Gaiaba for his outburst. That's uncalled for. Lastly, last council meeting, there was a statement made that we thanked all the, the alternates for, for their service on the Planning Commission, but a comment was made that it was brought up to extend their time or their, their duty past their, their expiration date. I asked for an extension to the alternates, and I never got a third vote. So there was an attempt from this diocese to extend their, alternate, extend their terms, and it wasn't approved. So I just want to let the public know that there was an attempt. And I'd like to close off this meeting as soon as the mayor adjourns it, in the honor of William Belford. I don't know if everybody knows who he is. He's a gentleman, Afro-American, served one of our first airmen in the United States. He was a TUSD airmen, very well-liked in the city, and he had a charter here. And I personally was able to meet him and work alongside him. So I want to close this meeting when it's adjourned in his honor. Thank you.
Councilman, Councilman Gaiaba?
Thank you. Thank you, David, for the support. I really appreciate it. But he's right. I've been up here for two and a half years, and I don't know why the personal attacks on me personally, but I have never once yelled at anybody from this dais, called them names. I've always treated the folks out there with the best and most utmost respect that I have. So for somebody to come up here and rail on me for whatever reason, when you could have just easily had a conversation with me out in the, out in, outside and say, you know, you were wrong about that, and maybe we could have had that discussion, very inappropriate. It's, it's becoming very personal, and I, I would like to understand why it's become personal to do that. We're here to try to work together, not to be attacking and yelling and hollering at each other. That being said, I don't owe an apology to anybody, but what I will say is I'm human, and I can make mistakes. I also will tell you that I never called her any names, I never spoke to her disrespectfully. I just felt she was in error. Didn't accuse her of anything either. So that being said, though, I would like to explain what's going, what's, what Dave Marquez and I were doing. Just a week or so ago, we were up at Legislative Action Day up in Sacramento, flew up there specifically with the League of California Cities to lobby our, all of our representatives. David and I were taken on an invite, that's what we do, to visit several of our, our legislators, including Senator Roth. As you know, he's got a little controversy going on, but with the SB1 and, and all that. But he was wonderful to explain. I, I know Senator Roth pretty well. I call him general instead of senator. And he, he had asked, and so I'm going to put this out there, whether you approved of it or disapproved of it from the each individual council member, but he said it's, it's passed, and, and he would like, and so, Tom, you guys might, might, he's asked that maybe perhaps you would let the community know what plans you may be having already for that money to show that we're going to move forward in action on, on that bill and getting things done now that it is approved. Whether you agreed to it or not, it is an approved bill, you know, and, and it's going to be moving forward. We also met with Assembly Member Jose Medina. At the end of the day, it was a very delightful meeting with him. He's always gracious to me personally. I've known him for quite some time, before I was even a council member. We went there to see him. We were actually upended by Napolitano, who actually took our, you know, the timeframe, and she was in there first. And of course, you know, she's the UC president, and so he said, sorry about that, Jeff, she gets first call. I said, I, I get it. He sits on those committees. But what he did do is he did not have to stay around to visit with us, yet he did still. He stayed late just to sit down and listen to our concerns from our city and from our League of California Cities, who is our lobbying arm. That's who does that, and that's who set these things up to do that. So we have these Legislative Action Days. Now, I sit on the Revenue and Taxation Policy Committee for the League of California Cities. It's my second year on that one, and I was on the Transportation Committee on, on that one as well. And so we go over many of these revenue taxation-type policies and the legislation that's coming out of there. And what I'd like to ask is, maybe, Pat, we could add the League of Cities on here, since I hold a position where I could actually report on it personally. Whoever wants to put that on, I think it'd be a great thing, so I can always continue to update you. I do it here at the end, like I'm doing now, but, huh? So, but some of the talking points on the housing problems is, take a look at SB2, which is called the Atkins Bill, SB3, which is BEAL, the Affordable Housing Bond Act, and of course, SB540, which is the Roth Workforce Housing Community, Opportunity Zones. Those are a few in the housing area. If you're not familiar with them, I've got a couple talking point pages I stole. I'll just give you one if you want one, to know how that goes. And with that, I'll say, thank you, staff. You did a marvelous job, as always, that we've done together for, for the past two and a half, three years, on both the CDBG grant and on this, on this particular budget that we did. My abstention from that budget was not an indictment that it was a bad budget or not. There were just some things that I was not clear on, and, and I didn't want to be voting either way on that particular issue. I knew we would have our three votes. So it passed, and that, and that's good. I already told you that was a good thing. So with that, I would ask that you guys all have a wonderful evening. We'll see you next week. What's the study session? Caught you all off guard, huh? Well, once you answered it, I'll just...
We're, we're still finalizing that, Councilman. And we're going to go ahead and close the meeting in memory of William Belford, Tuskegee Airmen.